Hello, Ms. Van. Are you live, Ms. Trent?
Yes, I'm here.
Here to see some folks in the audience and let's see. Just kind of going a little bit reverse order. Mark, if you want to come up and tell us a little bit. I think the project is going to talk about the Lake Harbor unless we got an update.
Good evening.
Great news?
Yes.
Yeah, we've had, for our last meeting, you requested that I try to give the contractor a breakdown of the costs from a perspective of looking at material and labor costs. I did that, got with the contractor, they gave me a list, and I assume you've got a copy of that, had a chance to look at that.
Only the mayor has seen that. The mayor knew they all have seen that.
Okay. Hopefully it fit the traditional breakdown of concrete and different things like that, prices were associated, no specific particular to it. A little bit of that was a question for Mark.
And that's what I told them to focus on. I told them I thought that they need to focus on material costs, because to me, the labor costs, even if labor has gone up, that it seemed like the issue with the change orders causing material increases due to, you know, fuel costs, concrete, wood costs. Those are the obvious things, and if you look at the breakdown of this, obviously, the big ticket item as far as increases is concrete items. Your concrete curb gunner, your concrete sidewalk, concrete boxes, concrete bike. Those are the ticket items that are most expensive, the projects hit at the very beginning, and of course, with the change order, those are the items that increase the change order. So, the other item is very little increase in those items, so you've got four or five ticket items that are really, really bothering the project out, and that's from the very beginning. So, those material costs, I did look at them, for instance, I'll just look at just a few with you.
And I'm forwarding it to everybody now.
Twenty-four inch curb gunners, maybe a ticket item that we have, we had a original cost of, total cost of fifty-eight thousand five hundred, went up to a hundred twelve thousand dollars. So, that item is almost doubled. I will tell you, just from my experience of working in construction over the years, the twelve dollars a linear foot for curb in the very beginning was way too low. For whatever reason, I don't know why they priced it that way. Twelve dollars on linear foot is generally about the bottom end of what you give if you're doing a machine poured, five inch curve. On the existing road, when you go into existing entry payment, sidewalk already in some places, ditches, you're not going to build a machine poured for on that. It's going to be a hand poured curve, and that curve is going to be twenty, twenty-five dollars on every foot. So, to me, that was an item that they probably missed at the very beginning when they did their bids. I think they probably based it on machine poured, machine poured curve, and it's not going to happen. So, I think that's one of the items where it's, that's probably the biggest item that they realized they couldn't do at that cost. So, and some of that, some of that, I believe, is from material costs, and I think some of that's from a miscalculation on their part.
Let's just cut the chase on that, because we know that they're there. We've now seen it, it's broke down, and for those who've got it, if somebody needs to get it and they can send it to their PDA or something like that.
Yeah, I just, I just heard now that they're.
Or print it. So, there was two parts. One is, you know, you're almost now at a political decision, you know, it says the cost has went up, whether we like it or not. But then there was the second part, which was, you know, are utilities going to do another, even if we trigger and make an action, it doesn't matter if you can't start the project. And therein lies the second question, which was, you know, are utilities going to be moved, and when would they be moved, or be restoring this stuff on some site, this theoretical data in the future, which could be parts from that.
Could be. My opinion is, if you said, "Go back and start the project tomorrow," I think there are some things that we can start moving on.
Like?
Some of the curb gunner can still go in. There's some things on the north side, excuse me, the south side of the road that doesn't have the conflict with utilities, some of the sidewalk, some of the curb gunner, any and some of the drainage. But there are areas where, especially on the north side, that we know we've got conflicts with utilities that involve gas line services, not names, but services. Those services can be relocated either up or down, but from our conversation with the gas company, they, they're like a lot of people right now, they're backed up. It could be two, it could be two or three months before they can move those services.
Do they hire subcontractors for that?
They do.
Is that something that we can facilitate with?
It's possible. I know they have their own list.
It's just labs for each house, right? And that's the only theory of where the gas line goes, and we're having the elevation labs, right, we're putting a drainage.
That's correct.
So, we've got these other, most of that's going to be quarter inch.
Same with the water lines, even if the water's on, it will be much quicker.
And there's no real way, I mean, once you get the elevations because of how the drains can't really change them, right, from an engineering standpoint?
There's possible some areas that can be adjusted. It's hard to say the whole area can be adjusted because you're dealing with utilities at all kinds of different levels. So, to be able to say consistent with it, I don't think we can do that, but I think there may be some areas that we might be able to do somewhere.
So, we kind of hand under around, you know, if you slide that stuff under?
It's possible. I would say, to be able to avoid that on the whole project, I would say it's impossible, but I think there are some areas that we might be able to maneuver some.
So, if we pull the trigger, are these people ready to start?
They can tell me they are ready to start. I do, I do. But I do, but I do want to say, I don't think that we couldn't say there are going to be some delays, because I do believe the gas company is going to cause us some delays, but I believe that there are things that we continue to work on while we can, while we've got that time, let's move on to something else, work in a different area. We've got some pipe that could be put in there at the end of the project, meaning the far eastern end. There are some areas that we can move around to and begin to work on those areas, so.
I wanted to ask, kind of like a follow-up question to something that you had mentioned last time, a decision to maybe do one side rather than the other. The side, how feasible is that, understanding, would it be reducing the scope of work, actually reducing the cost? I had asked a question about Mayor Lambo earlier today, but can you give us some more insight? If we were to approach it in a way where, based on what you're saying today, there's some pieces that possibly can be worked. Would it, would it connect one side, and then we would have to deal with utility issues on the other side, kind of give us some perspective and understanding?
I think if, if I had to make a suggestion on that, and you're correct, I think that the scope of work would definitely change, obviously, the price is going to change with that. Possibly look at the, of moving on the south side of the street. You don't, you don't have as much curb gunner work there, curb gunner is your big ticket item on the whole project. That's the most expensive. So, I think if you concentrate more on the south side, I think you get more out of the project at this point in time, you should be able to go ahead and do what storm drain has to be done on that side, as well as the, a little bit of curb gunner on that side, and maybe the sidewalk on that side. So, that way, you could treat that as a project. I would think you could come back in under budget of your original contract if you did that, and then if you go back to the north side, you could do that later as a phase to. That way, you can get your sidewalk in, you can get the whole sidewalk inside.
How do we handle, we've got some driveways that are tore up at this point, we've got a lot. If we kind of start the project, finish what we can, kind of just plow it with the, how many of those driveways can be solved? How many would remain to be kind of messed up?
We've got some storm drain boxes and storm drain pipe here on the western end of the project, on that north side of the road, where you're talking about the driveways. We'd have to go in there and finish those boxes, which means put tops on them, do some drain, grass and stabilization in those, I think there's about five driveways there, that we would have to go in and they need a concrete or asphalt, probably concrete this stage.
But that would be permanent, in other words, we're going to fix those.
That would be permanent.
Let the project catch up as it does.
That's right. That's right. We definitely couldn't leave it like that, because we'd have to go ahead and do some back permanent work on it.
And right now, projected cost of the total is?
One hundred and three thousand.
I think that if there was support to take this to a conclusion, do we have, do we have the supporting documentation to put it on the agenda?
I mean, you, we could, you could vote to do, what would you be doing, fully the cost overrun?
Trying to make it continue.
At just what they, they suggested was the cost increase in the project fully, or some amended version?
Right, I think we have to have a clear conversation so that we'll.
Well, if we, if we amend the pieces, then you end up doing a piece being, and there has to be other pieces that will eventually catch up to. If you keep an existing contract, it's a totality of the work. It's just a, a cost change in terms of material, most of it. The list, if we adjust the list and accept the fact that it's not going to get completed in a long time.
We, we do it in pieces, you know, when we solve it up, it's going to be.
Well, that's my point is, at least if they're started, because here's the question. I don't think that it's mandatory support either way, but I don't know if they're planning the project or showing it.
Yeah, but I'd still rather to have the whole ground to get the whole project, you know, both sides, somehow we could get that in place, but we, we do it in a space.
Stating.
Yeah.
Stating what could be the south end.
Contract in whole, so no way of ending up this bend right now, if the contract is six hundred thousand dollars, we're going to end up paying a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. What would say to keep that contract and then let them do their job, which you're supposed to do with construction management, okay? Fair? So, isn't that technically the same thing without tying it up into lots of little small pieces?
So.
We just let them do their job?
Stating that, keeping the contract intact as it is, but there is a.
Change order.
Additional change order, one hundred and three thousand, but from this point forward, stating let's completely resolve and lay the sidewalk on the side of the street, that makes more sense, based on some of the other obstacles that may come up with regard to the, well, that we are facing with the utility.
But based on the history, I mean, we, we all, we do the new cost of the whole construction, and there are going to be some obligations to put in there, ditches, you know, some kind of, I mean, I don't want two months later, they're going to come back and with the, another increase.
Oh, well, that's where you've got to, they've got to move. Some numbers have actually come down. The longer we wait, obviously, the issue changes.
And I would like to say that in a, in a separate cost increase, the projected overrun was one oh three, but the difference between the original contract amount and the revised contract amount is actually more than that. So, it's one hundred and fifty-two thousand. Almost one hundred and fifty-three thousand.
It's almost like a two-part decision. Do the project, don't do the project, continue with the project, give them the numbers they're asking for, and then just manage this thing through the mess. To be honest, we can't really, I prevent the mess, that's we.
But am I right in saying then, Mark, this price would only be locked in if they bought all the materials now, right? So, if we broke it into phases, it would still require all the materials to be purchased now, right?
Yes.
Was that one of the issues, an increase in concrete, something like that?
So, can we purchase it now at the price, and it will be locked in?
Got the desk call, down there calling to do the project, but I would think it's very smart to lock the price right at the pick right now, and, you know, like the number thing, I mean, concrete will be, maybe the labor price is going to end in some kind of way, I mean, right now we have the pick, but that, that goddamn problem is that, I'm telling you.
Let me correct something.
So, are we leaning, are we leaning towards to accept the increases?
Yes, cousin.
I think you're finding it's a fine lot.
Because I, okay, so whatever decision that we are going to enter, I think we should do a revised contract and say, "We accept this price, and project should be done in this amount of time, and if the market change, we won't be responsible for any of that anymore." The project has to be done. Or we can have another option, is that you sell the run, to ensure the project will be done.
If you modify your contracts, you got to go back to both parties, get them signed, you got to go back to, they can move the contract about this much.
So, you were, we're trying to make the clarification.
On the question I had answered a long ago about the materials, you could go in more materials like concrete, pipe, those type of materials, but remember, a lot of curb gunner is actually poured in place, so if you pour curb gunner forty-five days now, then you'll pay the cost of concrete to whatever it is in forty-five days. And so, that part you could not lock in. They generally will keep the cost there for thirty days of concrete, but it's been fluctuating in some ways, they generally won't guarantee it for thirty days. I hope we to the point where it's peaked, which a lot of people think it is, but.
But you see a lot of prices went down, so at least that part. I would love to have captured back the contingency, because I have a hard time to help, but if you have a contractor that's not going to do it, then you've really got a Fisher Cut, but that's what it comes down to.
But that has to be at least justified, as far as what you use that. This document, I didn't describe that I had called out there.
But I think we're, I think we're reasonably divided, but I think a decision can be made, so I want to be able to make one, let it go or let it fail on its own, as it is what it is.
So, I'm not sure if I'm clear on what the decision is.
Yeah.
We have, we have an existing contract. Okay, that part is, is a bit, and what they're asking for is an addendum to that, which would be a price increase on the change order. You know what that number is, even if it's been done in piecemeal, but additional request, because the first request has been approved, so it's just the additional request of one hundred and three. And to get that, we have to have some piece of paper around here that kind of says how we reset the group, right? And we should be able to vote upon accepting that, and then give you the advice of managing that contract to the best you can, and get it done before we all pass out.
I agree that that is, that the vote is that straightforward, unless you were also talking about phasing the project in some way of.
I think we give them the ability to.
That's fine.
They'll phase it on their own. Even if you were building it normally, you start on one end and work to the other end of the street, that's phasing that you've left. But otherwise, how do we do that? You know, you run into, you know, House X has got one problem, and House Y has another problem, we'll be here all year. That's, you're the expert.
Mark, how do you, how do you feel about some years?
Well, the project has been on that long, which is why it's a problem.
Right, and in my opinion, I think it's time, this project is due to completion, we need to, because I think it's not fair to the citizens to continue carrying this on anymore.
Well, the driveways have been tore up, we got signs out there saying, "Construction is made." It's not hard to figure out.
I'm of the opinion, I mean, I agree with Dorothy, I mean, it's time to continue to move forward with the project to completion, but understanding better control of the project management, if it's more feasible to get one side of the street done, then let's get that done. You know, if there, if there are fewer obstacles to connect the dots on one particular side of the street, that's progress.
Agreed. Ben?
Well, the project should be done, but if we're doing this, we have to make sure that they're not coming back and say, in a few months, they want another increase. So, we, yeah, we are four out getting to them, and we want to hear from them, so either go approach, either one gets one side done and then gets the other side done, how much time is this project going to take?
Targeted on one side. I mean, you should get a pretty good bid on it, if you can do that work on the side alongside in that town.
If we keep it moving while we're dealing with utilities in another different area, I mean, with Mike, I mean, I think he's still talking about toward end of year.
Yeah, no way, unfortunately. I don't think you're going to get those utilities moved before the government, after what we've heard from the gas company.
Unfortunately, we're going to pay mercy of the gas company with that, but, you know, we're working as much as we can while we're waiting to.
Then Georgia Power by Atlantic Gas Light.
I'm not sure. I think so. I heard something about it.
I think so. And then Atlantic Gas Light actually owns the pipe, and we have more discussions with some really interesting people at Georgia Power. We know some people there, and maybe that can get us, I mean, we're in a tight, we've been good team players, maybe that can get us pushed up a little bit. We're not, we're not asking, I mean, they're not rebuilding the wall, there's not that thing, is what I'm saying. So, I think that's, you know, somebody wants to work on it, and we had the back edge and make that, I think you could get a lot of that in conjunction with the water, you know, that's a good question, I can't answer that much. But let's. We're good to add it to the agenda and make it happen.
So. So, we would be, we're adding to the agenda the approval of the new contract amount of the five hundred and forty, we've got the number here, we'll add that to the motion, and the authority for Whitley Engineering to manage the project to completion. And the expectation that CNC Lovejoy is going to purchase all the materials so that there are no additional cost overruns in the net, they're not going to say forever. Give me a timeframe that seems reasonable, six months, eight months?
We could ask for six. I don't think you'd get eight, I think six is going to be difficult with the way things are going right now, but we definitely could ask, well, I think, three or four months.
And the mayor to authorize, to authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
We'll work that correctly when we get there.
But additionally, you know, speaking to what can be done, what can be fully connected, you know, on, on the appropriate side, let's, let you manage it, but manage it so that there's some visible results that continue all the way through on that, on that south side.
And that's what I would say, we look more toward the south side, see how far we can go. Now, we do, we do have reeasements that we still need on that project.
So, we have the, we have the one, the land bank did just vote to give us the property by children, so that's good, so the only remaining one is the water. Which is not going to be here.
We didn't have that.
I mean, not because they said no, I just don't think we.
We know, she also be, I have to plant some plants over there to, for yourself.
We're just wanting to be clear on the will of the council and the intention for completion, you know, let's make things move so that they're visible, completed, and giving us time to kind of work on the other issues so that that can run through the presentation and what.
I'd like to add that we should give notification or something to the citizens over there that are being, to let them know what's going on, what's happening, you know, give them something to, you know, say that we're not just, you know, messing with the driveway and it's going to be there. I think that would be appreciated.
We'll just do that side of town, right?
Or just even along that corridor.
Well, but there's a lot of people who drive through there, everybody from, we know somebody on that, who's probably not going to have.
Send a letter to the whole county.
I could work with the contractor more too, from the perspective of, first section that we've got, then we've already got a pipe in, we've got driveways cut up, let's go in and see if we can finish those driveways and finish that route. I mean, I know it's difficult for contractors to do it one at a time, but before we get a cluster of five or six, maybe we want to finish those, stabilize grass, let's go on to something else, but let's not leave them like that until we finish that whole project.
And I think to Renee's point, Councilwoman Knight.
Construction science, you keep saying, "May seventeen, we can resume the project," something, embarrassed every time we get a drive by, it's in August now.
I think it is important, though, for you, if you go inside to go with the project, let's try to move on, let's try to move on it fast, because months of January, February are a lot of good months for construction, so see what we can do.
It appears there's enough votes here to make it happen, so we're going to put it on the agenda?
Yeah, well, of course, I said to the council, but I was just going to clarify that, I think that's exactly what Councilwoman Knight was suggesting, is that the parts that can be finished now, finish them now, and then if we start on the south end, then that's the more progress we can see sooner, then let's start on the south end and get as much progress as we can do.
And the world out there understands the current issue, where you're an employer, having a hard time, you know, keeping employees because there's not available, pricing is going up, and everybody's having the same problem, and we're not giving, you know, but to some degree, we give our word, and we're going to keep it. And we don't hope it doesn't, not anytime soon, but anyway, we'll have that through the end. Thanks, Mark. All right, reviewing meeting agenda, I just, I'm too good. Minutes from August tenth, work session, regular session, you had those before you, anybody have any issues with that? Welcome Center, this was one of the original architects and from the original design for checkmate. Remember, there was a total of four, reasonably reasonable, more not so much, and we kind of asked the other two to just participate with other projects, so the Welcome Center, that particular contract would be DJing the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be to take a set of construction plans forward to the point of being able to, to visit us out or determine, you know, what's going to happen there. Any questions related to that? There is questions?
Comments, not questions. So, on the agenda, it was noted as a 2020 expenditure, but I do want to point out that that would be, that is a new identified project that is not listed on the current SPOS list, so the motion would be, would better serve us if you choose to designate 2020 funds, SPOS 2020 funds, that it is, and the approval of the necessary budget amendment.
One of the things to be careful about is, you know, I know, I know some people are going to look at a linear box, and, you know, like the alphabet, A, who's, in a course of a year, the theory is, if we do everything right, it's going to happen perfect, but we've just seen on construction that in some cases, been talked about for eight years. That's really not true. What most people do is they line up more projects than you have, because each of these projects are going to fall behind, and especially if we're utilizing public funds to get a complete project, which is the way you have to spend money. You can always delay or change some of your other priorities at some event, so I don't want us to be locked into the fact that, you know, A is a number, but these projects in some cases have to move forward, in other cases, they're in early design, and you don't even really know what the end result is going to be yet, so it is a little fluid, right? And you just have to work with that as you go through your SPOS budgets, pretty common, not really an issue, and there's more than one way for us to handle it. We've got five to six years of SPOS ability, and as you get more toward the end of the year, you can always pull from another. Any concerns on that? Any other issues? Any other issues?
I have a concern about this item.
Okay.
Not about the slot, but this project is about 3,400 square feet. Normally, we only have 18 parking spots. So, by the city ordinance, that we need three, every three sits, we will need a parking spot. Plus, multi-employee require parking spot. So, do we have enough to spot to make the determination for this place to be a restaurant before we start to accommodate? As the 18 plus, after we accommodate the disabled access and parking, how many parking spots do we have left? And is that enough for us to set, to determine that this project, this property is a good fit for restaurant?
Couple answers. Traditional parking ratios of five parking spaces per thousand square feet of retail space? Okay. Some of the city code, and I'm going to use, basically use as an example, has a mandatory parking requirement zero. Absolutely zero. Which theoretically would say where...
LCP code?
It does exist, right?
LCP code require three sits, three, three, three sits would require one parking.
Which, which is only classified...
Multi-employee require, require one parking spot. We have three sits.
Which, which is only classified.
And also for this, if we set it this way, how much of an impact will the traffic?
Barring the answer. The other thing to remember is we have an additional piece of property on the other side. The city chose to sell that piece of property. We know that we have used this facility for, you know, government bench that the city has. We've managed to figure it out. Regardless of who owns it, the property is not going to expand itself. And at some point, it has to be utilized. And we realize that the cost of the current building far exceeds what an average person would pay for it, right? You've got two and a half million dollars in building. It's a very nice building. So, to be able to get a functionality out of it is probably good. And I'm not sure you're correct on making parking spaces.
I am correct.
Other questions?
I am correct on the parking requirement. And with the, I mean, I mean, the solution is good, but we are looking at park. If we push this project forward, our tenant will be parking on a property that city doesn't own. So, I, I don't know the legal aspect for that. I would suggest us to fix the parking issue first before we can make the solid determination. What is this building? What is the best fit, what is, what is the best view for this building with what we have? And then start to spend the money on the set goal.
Point them. Other questions? Miss Knight?
So, what's regarding to the property and the number of spaces? There is green space on the back. Is, is there an opportunity or possibility for that to be paved in a manner with a connecting sidewalk that kind of speaks to the, the issue that Councilwoman Knight had?
A connecting sidewalk on that side, put the elevation come around that side would be tough. I walk back there and I think I could get you another six questions. But is it from a cost benefit standpoint? Is it really worth? And we know that the property on the other side, you know, they're asking to make it balanced for us. There's no number.
Yeah, the property on the other side. No, I mean, and I guess it's, it's better to have more questions to understand what, what may need to be done, what's feasible. Because I understand what Councilwoman Knight is referring to. To some degree, there are some things that we're going to have to do in order to bring some of the properties that the city owns. If we're saying we're, if we're advertising it as restaurant space, then it needs to be outfitted to a certain degree as restaurant space. That's, that's something that I think we've all come to understand, especially with the, the space over at the Marne Center and with the Welcome Center. But also wanting things to be sustainable and successful. I mean, I, I understand the point. So, it's a fair question. Is there an opportunity to park me on the back with a connecting sidewalk? Some of the things that we, we may need to ask throughout the process.
Mayor, can I say something? I'm sorry. So, Ben, remember for those of us who are here for the first iteration of this conversation, we do acknowledge that its position on the interstate will make it a very transient place, number one. So, it's not going to be necessarily the same kind of parking requirements that you would have for a, a restaurant somewhere off the interstate. If, if we designated that in any way, we can change the parking requirement. Our, the council can change it to whatever they want. And remember too, that one of the greatest things about this position is that you can serve walk from walking distance to four of our hotels, five if you're a walker at all. So, it, it's not going to be reliant as heavily on parking as it would if it was a more traditional restaurant in a different area that wasn't right there on the exit. So, just things to think.
And walkability was one of the things that we had discussed previously, that the Welcome Center itself, you know, whether it's as Clayton State grows, maybe their shuttle service that grows. Maybe that's one of the stops, you know? The, the ideas that we had previously about it being a social gathering space, an electric car charging station, they're, they're...
Would you agree with that?
Yeah, you know, accessible wifi, adding, you know, coffee and snacks and that kind of thing where it's a feature. But the accessibility off the interstate, you know? And this is why we ask questions. We have to ask questions, you know, so that we have a better conversation, so that we have a more informed vote as we go forward.
Next item, approval for the city manager, recommendation of advanced design solutions for special scope of work for House Notice Navier House in the amount of $30,670 for SPOS. Again, very similar, basically a hard asset that the city owns and we got to be able to take that for a set of design plans to be able to figure out how we're going to handle that facility in the future. Advanced design solutions, you got that in the package in the amount of $30,670. Any additional discussion on that? Miss Knight? Miss D? Mr. Qua? Miss Tran?
Yeah, it's just one employee company.
Is that a one employee company?
Can't say I asked how many employees I have.
We, we got their guy.
Okay. My concern is that through our code, they also have show, some sample of their work. And there are who pretty much doesn't have professional stamp. The only project, give me a second. The project, give me a second. One of the project, the, uh... The project at Marietta Street, showing appearing that what done it may, when it has a stamp on that. The license is not current, it's left. So, there's not even... So, and this is one of the reason, and I asked for, I asked for the council to get the information package in time of manner. Give the council enough time to read through the material, to do our research to have a better understanding about the information we give. So, we can be informed, we can be, we can be informed and evaluate the information to make the right decision for the city. Just for the tonight, we have 100, one, 102 pages. Last council meeting, we have an item that we have to go to a different route because the project were over 200,000. And the, it's not, it wasn't done through a field, a competitive field bid, which has gone through. The council would have been put in an awkward situation, but we, we would not comply by law. So, again, I'm asking for the council to be able to review the package of information. Have enough time, a week before submitting the, submitting the file. So, we all will be having enough time to read through our material. If we need tougher terminology in the contract, if we need a, a, a professional help, what understanding what there, so we can be informed and we can make the right decision. So, please do so because this is making me nervous.
Any other comments?
Yes, so we, we, we're picking up. We, we have the city recommend the council to choose contractor. But yes, the material we send it to the council, one doesn't have the professional stamp, the other one has, but the stamp is not even, is not current. The writing is left.
And just mayor, remember that if you make the motion, it's 2014 SPOS, not 2020. The, the Navier House is actually designated in 2014.
Item three, Public Works Director, Mr. Kyle Guest. Any comments related to the city manager's recommendation to hire Mr. Kyle Guest as the new Public Works Director? Miss Knight?
No question.
Miss D? Mr. Qua?
No question.
Miss Tran?
No question.
All right. Item, the, the S and A financial software is SPOS 2014. We talked about that with the finance officer. Hey, Chris, you online?
I'm here.
All right. You're up. In this case, we're just basically talking about the new financial software. We talked about it at the last council meeting, coming out of SPOS, SPOS 2014, I think. Any additional questions?
Yes, sir.
Hang on, let me see if anybody's got any questions. Miss Knight? Miss D? Mr. Qua? Miss Tran?
No question.
Thank you. Good job, Chris. All right.
Lieutenant, Lieutenant Community Engagement Job Description.
Any additional details? Obviously, we have a position there. We're just kind of defining exactly what that is. Any comments on that, Miss Knight? Miss D? Mr. Qua? Miss Tran?
No question.
Annex roof ever seen. Obviously, this is some roof repair that needs to be done in the amount of $13,421. Any additional conversations about the roofs here?
Just right here.
Chief? Ever seen one of the roof?
Yes.
Ancient daddy wanted.
I don't think they do resideni, because they only do flat roofs. Sure.
And did they get like roofed out?
Yes, sure can. I found out about it when they did the roof at its electric. The building bought down. I saw it there and so I stopped and talked to the owner of its electric and he said, oh, yes, it's going where to go. And since then, I've hired to do the roof on my building, John, for a great job, a lot of preparation. So, is that small roofing or do they need to? They got the roof? No, this is just a, a sill that they put on top of it.
Oh, okay. Not doing the whole roof?
No, no.
Oh, got, got, got.
But it goes along with the fifty, the one.
So, any, they put it on you, any kind of material, some of any kind of material?
Yes.
Am I trying to get the, you know, those off of it?
Yeah, it's just flat. We're here to have a, a slight break, but I apologize for our issues.
Miss Van, any questions on ever seal?
No question.
Okay. H, hang on, Chief, this one, same thing, Clayton State and Fire Department COVID vaccine. I guess this is where we're partnering up with them just a little bit.
Yes, I'm going to refer Deputy Chief Moss on this one, who's got more information on that.
Yes, so we talked about an agreement with Clayton State and us being able to do the vaccines there for them. When they get their students back, their health department staff gets really busy, so they don't have a lot of time to do their own vaccines. So, we started that discussion about us delivering the vaccines there, do basically taking our operation there and taking care of their students as well as our folks that need to come back for the boosters and the upcoming, you know, any additional people that need to...
Our space is going to be used for the election, so that's...
Correct.
And it's just about where the people are.
Yes, it's just us picking up, moving over there. They, they have a grant that pays for our expenses over there, so we kind of, we end up at zero cost and deliver the service over there.
Questions, Miss Knight? Miss D?
After the elections and everything is over, will you be moving back into community or more?
We can. I'll still have stored capacity back there, you know, where we, where we keep it now. So, we certainly can move back when we're finished. But, you know, moving forward, it's, you know, we have that agreement with them, so I can do it separately. If council so wishes, we can do an event here and an event there, or we can hold it there, whichever one's more convenient.
Mr. Qua? Miss Tran?
No question.
All right. These are other items that we had. Now, all of those are given away now. So, we had some questions in terms of creating the position of Deputy Fire Chief. I believe everyone who had questions or others made in the fire or the police chief or so. And are there any further questions? Miss Knight?
And just so we're clear, so you may not have gotten, make sure you're working from the most updated work session agenda.
It's in the photo.
Okay. Because three items from the regular agenda were inadvertently left off of the discussion list. So, I just want to make sure. So, the next should be the, the proposal for PFAU engineering in the amount of $10,200.
Okay.
And that should be for SPOS 2014. And that's for the, the smaller White House. And that is already designated in 2014.
And that is the one where we had the visual presentation the last time, where we talked about the White House on the second floor. And they've already done a reasonable amount of work. Any additional questions, Miss Knight? Miss D?
No.
Mr. Qua? Miss Van?
No question.
And then the next one, mayor, would be the building of the pavilion?
Okay. Got it.
And that would be...
And so what this is, is the, the park space out of City Hall has a master plan to it. It's been around for a long time. And it's just a matter of implementing additional sections. And in this case, it is a true park building. You saw some photographs of it. And that basically isn't exactly like the one we have. So, it's further into that green space that we have. And it's basically 26 feet by 80 feet. So, it, it basically is just an A-frame type of roof, concrete floor, and additional areas for people to be able to, you know, have big homes or reserve for family or something like that. And that is an amount of $26,175 coming out of the carson...
Well, so you could do one of two things. You can either designate it as a new expenditure in SPOS 2020 and amend the budget accordingly. Or you can take it out of what is designated for 2014 under park improvements. But you just remember, you designated park improvements with a specific list, and so this might be changing out some of the things you had already put. So, either one works. You can take it out of 2014 park improvement, or you can designate it for 2020 and also... and also with any amended...
Well, we tried to use, uh, the older stuff.
Okay, so twenty fourteen?
Just to clean all that, 'cause we got rid of O eight for the most part, now O fourteen has been around a little while. Uh, maybe we'll have any objection to that? Here and there, okay. Um, I guess we're... Approval for the pay difference of two thousand seven hundred to all his enterprises to make the total cost thirteen thousand, two hundred, instead of the original approved at ten thousand, five hundred for the restrooms at the district. Uh, did he pay out SPOS, oh, oh, eight? Um, and are there any objections to that? This guy's already done the work, right?
Okay, yes, sir.
So this is just basically...
We just, if we didn't, if the council didn't approve the difference, it would just come out of the general fund.
Right. It's easier to track it, so it's not a lot of the collection, I think, one conservative way, yeah. Any questions, Miss Knight? Miss Dean? Mr. Quon? Miss Tran?
No question.
Okay, now we're back on topic.
Yes, thank you.
So, um, creating the position of deputy fire chief, everyone's had that before, any additional questions, Miss Knight? Or police chief, we already have deputy. You're on my mind, Mark. But the deputy police is, um, Miss Dean? Mr. Quon?
No question.
Miss Tran?
No question.
Um, last item, or not last item, other item is resignation of the city manager, of Miss Sylvia Redd. And it's just kind of laying out the, the terms for transition. Twenty-year, nineteen-year employee, significant amount of history with the city of Mar, um, take a tremendous opportunity in, in a, in a city that is competitive with us, and we would hope she doesn't do as well there as she does here.
That's nice.
And any, and there are certain terms in there that kind of lays out timing as well as some of the equipment that, that transitions, all of these cell phones, things like that. Any additional discussions on that, I think, Miss Knight? No?
So I just want to clarify this one. So, uh, she will be working with us until October, because of, we find, let her take the second or she is using vacation time after October, we would...
All right, what, what it is, is her, her, her time as a city manager ends at the end of the month, and we're going to pay her through October because we really, really want her to answer that phone and to be able to handle some of our projects.
After hours and weekends. Like now.
We have a transition that's necessary, and our next item is we're gonna have some interim city managers. Um, so in essence, um, we're, we're gonna pay for some additional time, even though she might not be sitting here. Um, I got a feeling we'll get more than the money's worth.
So we pay for her working, but not at the normal regular hour working, just what we need?
If you wanna say it that way, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any, any additional items on that?
The, the order, the, the language in the ordinance doesn't say so. Uh, and could we add that language in the ordinance that we're going to pass? Because it's, for now, it just say, you mean on the payroll, but it doesn't have, uh, say that she wouldn't be helping us with who the transition is.
Yeah, issue to inform.
I have no issue with that.
And any other items? Here and then, um, item twenty-one fifteen relates to the interim city manager, and that would be the appointment of deputy fire chief, Jeff Moss, as the interim city manager, uh, for the city of Mar. Um, there are some terms in there as well. Um, obviously, we don't anticipate any of those being a real issue, but that was asked at the request of Mr. Moss, and they certainly seem very reasonable and agreeable. Um, any other questions related to that resolution, Miss Knight? Miss Dean? Mr. Quon? Miss Tran?
No question.
Got it.
Just Mayor, we, remember, I'd ask that you designate that it starts August twenty-eighth, not the thirtieth, so we won't have two days without a city manager.
August twenty-eighth. And just, as we walk through that, we'll, we'll have, okay? And then the last one, on this one anyway, um, was we, we own a piece of property on the end of Meadowbrook and Lake Harmon. We've owned it for a reasonable period of time. That property was originally purchased to prevent any commercial development on that corner. And years ago, the, the city manager received some rental income from that property. Over time, um, we have an interest in, in being able to build residential development on that property, and we want to transfer it to URA, with ultimately the URA entering into a memorandum of understanding with the private sector to be able to do some engineering, so eventually they can figure out how many lots they've been building there, and from that, you know, that we'll be able to determine what that value is. And that is where you see that, um, questions, Miss Knight? Miss, Mr. Quon? Miss Tran?
No question.
Um, there, there, yes, we can. Um, there, there's one more agenda item, you know, that looks like it has the ability to pass. Um, there was some discussions at the pass, including planning sessions of adding a logo to the water tower at, uh, City of Mar.
What?
And all I was asking was, has everybody kind of confirmed that that logo still holds as what they want? And are they still at, at a price that was, was there?
Well, and I'll be honest with you, since the, I have not been able to, I know it's there, I was just having that time to find the, the cost estimate, so we wouldn't have the cost estimate, and we would, uh, to the mayor's point, we would have to get it updated. And we don't know that that price still holds three years later. So I don't know that you wanna vote on it, uh, in terms of the cost, 'cause we don't know what it is.
That was the one question. So it looks like there's support for it, obviously. Um, let's, let's find that final over and just make it happen.
So is that, is that going to be an agenda item now? What would be the...
Well, without the cost number, I don't know that you put it on the agenda, could...
I do.
But I'm asking.
We wanna be clear, so, so there is an understanding that there's support for it at this point in time, and so we just wanna be diligent and pressing for it to put some paint on the wall.
So we'll have an, an updated cost estimate and agenda item in the next week? Is that, is that good? Um, and so if I, if I may, talk about one more thing, Mayor. Um, in, in the exhibit space, um, as we're working with, uh, collecting bids for the concrete floor, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there, a lot of tables and chairs and some old cabinetry and some what look like dry cleaning presses. Martita, if you wanna give them the information, did you already give the pictures that...
Oh, no, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just gonna declare that surplus property.
Yeah, so, and, and, uh, Martita just did a little research and even knew the tables that look like the size tables that are in there are about two hundred and fifty dollars and each, and the, the, the dry cleaning presses type things, new, were five thousand dollars, and those are, you know, thirty years old. So, uh, we just wanna declare it as surplus and with our ability to sell it to the highest bidder on dov deals, um, dot com.
Let somebody come in. And, and we got their photos?
Yeah, she's going, she's running it, good.
We'll, we'll have those, so we'll just add it as an agenda item, declare whatever's left in that top floor space. Declare surplus property, so the city can dispose of it through the whole chance.
Next one, I'm going.
I will just do that at the very last one.
So you'll have two new business items, if you remember, the one you agreed to add.
New contract.
Yes, and then, uh, about the, um, Lake Harmon, Curragut project, and then eleven will be the surplus thing of the property.
Got it. All right. Um, why don't we take about a two-minute break, get a cup of coffee, and then we'll come back.
Oh.
And, uh, we, we will have an executive session tonight, um, to discuss a combination of, of potential legal matter as well as personal.